Hey, I'll pass it over to our superintendent for retirement reception recognition.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank our food service department for providing the cake and the punch. Make sure I have one left back there with some sugar in it, if anybody could, just my favorite. Tonight is a wonderful evening, but it's bittersweet. It is a time when we take a moment to pause and thank those who have made a difference in our district for so many years. Please accept my heartfelt congratulations and appreciation for your dedicated years of service. Tonight, we will honor fourteen of our retirees in person. In all, over the course of these twelve months, a total of eighteen staff members will have retired with a combined total of years of service of four hundred and fifty-seven years. That's a lot of great years that give into our district. We have, as I said, fourteen people to honor tonight. The first person who we're going to be honoring is from the high school. And it only made sense that this person had one of her performance groups here to play for her tonight before we honor her. So Mrs. Christine Reader is one of the first people we'll be honoring tonight. And our jazz ensemble is here to play a song for us tonight called Toe Rings.
Chart was selected by our trumpet players. I gave them an assignment to find some new music. And they went on J.W. Cooper and typed in toe. What would come up then? Toe. So I ordered it, and we shall remember the taste. So go hit there. It's going to feature on drum set Eric Hakeman, on guitar Carson Davy, and on piano Adam Jasper.
One more round of applause for Donna. It is my pleasure to call up here Mrs. Fiorella, who will be recognizing our high school retirees this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Mrs. Reader, who has dedicated the last thirty-two years of her life to Niagara Weefield School District and our students. And I'm going to just share some of the amazing accomplishments she's done with our school and our students. It's just a glimpse of how amazing she is. Ms. Reader originally was from Utica, Michigan, and proud University of Michigan graduate. Started teaching at Niagara Weefield High School in September of nineteen ninety-three. She was hired to teach one band high school brass and percussion lesson, lesson at Tuscarora and Eric Road Elementary School, a top band, and a pit orchestra for the musicals. By nineteen ninety-six, the numbers in the high school band program grew so much that she started a second concert band, which lasted until COVID. Since twenty twenty, Mrs. Reader has taught band, jazz ensemble, jazz club, pit orchestra, music theory, and all the high school instrumental lessons. Hundreds of her students have been selected to participate in the all-county area, all-state, and all-state conference ensembles over the years. She has also inspired countless students to go to become performers and/or musicians, educators. Two former students presently are teaching in Niagara Weefield, and others teach in Niagara Falls, Glotport, New Plain, Sweet Home, Danville, and Buffalo Charter School and out of state. From two thousand and three to two thousand and fourteen, Mrs. Reader has hosted NISMA major organization festivals here at Niagara Weefield for state music evaluations. Her concert and symphonic dance earn more than twenty gold and gold with distinction awards at such festivals that won many first place awards as out-of-state competitions in Boston, Virginia Beach, Orlando, Chicago, and Atlanta. Over her thirty-plus years, Mrs. Reader has worked with thousands of students on high school musicals as she's conducted twenty-seven shows here at the high school, only taking time off for maternity leave. Mrs. Reader was the recipient of the Buffalo Philharmonic Orchestra Niagara County Music Educators Association Award for Excellence in Music in two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and eighteen, her pit orchestra for the musical Sister App won Best Orchestra Performance at the Kenya Awards held at Chase Performing Arts Studio Center. Christine has adjuncted hundreds of students all over county, NISMA Solo Festival, has been band chairperson numerous times at all-county and area all-state festivals, and was chair of the New York All-State Bands from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. A professional trumpet player, Miss Reader has performed with the Buffalo Philharmonic Orchestra, has played shows at Chase Rivera Theater, and was a member of the Clarence Summer Orchestra, Amherst Symphony, Chick DeWaga Symphony, Buffalo Silver Band, and Erie County Music Educators Wound and Ensemble. Mrs. Reader and her husband are head directors of the National Music Abroad Empire Tour. They have taken hundreds of heads directors of American music, excuse me, hundreds of music students to Europe the last four summers, performing in Germany, France, Italy, Czech Republic, Slovenia, Croatia, Hungary, Italy, Australia, and Switzerland. Mrs. Reader follows Norman Bishmitch, Wallace Woodman, and Leah Bersino in the line of high school band directors at Niagara Weefield, which is the distinction of holding the position longest. Although they couldn't be here tonight, Christine would like to thank her husband, Richard, sons Eric and Andrew, and daughter Katie for being support team. She couldn't have done without them. And we'd like to thank you ourselves for all the years we've given you lots.
Yep, can I add one thing? The energy for so many of our meetings, for so many activities that we hold at the school for our opening days wouldn't have the energy if it wasn't for Mrs. Reader and the students that she's brought in. It kicked off so many of our opening days. So, thank you.
Next, I'd like to honor Mrs. Kathy Loveland, who has been with the district for twenty-two years. Miss Loveland was so kind and patient with all of our students. Mrs. Loveland was flexible and understanding when needed by her support in all areas of the building. Mrs. Loveland has always helped students meet the day-to-day expectations in the building. And we'd like to thank you for your dedication to all of us at the school and the district. We'd also like to thank Miss Burke, who has been with the district for six years and is so lucky that she's still willing to come and sub for the high school. During her time at Niagara Weefield, she has built many relationships with students. Miss Burke is often the adult of the building, the student sought to seek, discuss their problems, with help, and come up with some solutions. Mrs. Burke was able to make connections with all of our students and staff during her time at the district. And we are so thankful for you to continue that receiving once in a while when you have a minute. So, thank you.
So we can call Mr. Dominic Burley.
Where is Mary Melvillan? Mary! Mary worked twenty-four years for the district as a food service helper, bus attendant, and retired as a high school cook. She is a very organized individual and ran the high school kitchen very well. She was a team leader and was willing to help her coworkers anytime they needed it. One thing I learned about Mary was that she had a very dry sense of humor. And when she wanted to share the joke of the day with me, she would try to approach my office with a straight face, but would always burst out in laughter and ruin the punchline. And I always come to expect a joke or two the day every day we work together. Mary has a strong faith, and I remember experiencing personally a help setback. And I'll never forget, no tears, no tears. First thing she did was, wow, this is hard, come in, root prayer in my office. I'll never forget that because that's what it's all about. I have been blessed to work with such a great individual and always cherish all the great memories we made in the high school kitchen. Mary, God bless you, and enjoy your retirement with family and friends. Barb Sullivan. Barbara. Barb worked twenty-nine years for the district as a food service helper, currently at the middle school and a district-wide sub-cook. She is always a positive individual, willing to help anyone. Every time she was asked to sub-cook, it was never with any hesitation, no matter the location. Whatever the task given, Barb always made it look so easy, and her coworkers say she was always calm and easygoing about any given situation. I know Barb is currently employed until the end of June, but I do want to share one thing with all of you that I recently learned about Barb after all these years. Uh-oh, I don't look. Never did I know that she was a die-hard Barbra Streisand fan and preferred to be called Babs every morning. Barb, I truly have been blessed to have been able to work with you and share the laughter with all the great memories that were made. God bless you, Barb, and may you enjoy your upcoming retirement with friends and family. BS, do not forget to put your name on the sub-list.
My first one is Bob Jasper. He's worked thirty-six years as our bus mechanic, and he came back, he actually came back and growed for us after all those years. And we've been lucky to have him as a mechanic. Sandy Neeser has been a bus attendant and with Dominic also. She's been in the business for twenty-nine years, taking care of kids, and been wonderful, every morning with a smile.
Sandy worked twenty-nine years as a district, in the district, as a food service helper retiring from the high school kitchen. She was a great team player and multitasked throughout the kitchen. When asked, she would report to other kitchens when we were short-staffed. Sandy was, in case anybody never worked in the kitchen, Sandy was very famous for flooding the kitchen floor every time she emptied the three-pot sink. It was like Niagara Falls every day. And when she did something, wow, she, because my office is right across the three-pot sink, she would always look up with those guilty, guilty eyes. And I could feel someone like piercing my shirt or something. I would look up and it's Sandy, and I'm like, oh, God, what does she do now? Not for a dull moment, where we truly had the most fun in the high school. On behalf of the students, when she would be on the high school line serving the lunch, sometimes she would get so flustered that she would go to the students as they were waiting for the meal and she'd say, what am I doing? And the students would just shrug and look more confused than she was. And during those mealtimes, on many occasions, you know, the student would ask for a chicken patty or a hamburger, and she would go ahead and bun, but there was nothing on the bun.
Sharon Ticket. Sharon Ticket's been with us for eighteen years. He's a bus driver. Smiling every morning, calling on the radio, talking about the kids. Everybody was happy to see her. She's back driving for us again. Sharon, come on up.
Next, we have Darren Ma.
Hey, good evening. Tonight, I'm here to talk about Heidi Aquino. Heidi spent twenty-two years in the district, sixteen of them working with me. When Heidi told me she was retiring well over a year ago now, I remember feeling quite strange. She was by my side for so many years in my career, and during those years, I was learning and growing as a leader. Heidi was more than a secretary during those years. She was my foundation. Heidi made sure things ran seamlessly in the office daily. Heidi made sure parents' needs were met daily, over the phone and in person. Heidi made sure the fish were fat and given TLC daily. Heidi came to work daily with a smile and was always in an upbeat mood. Heidi made sure, you get the point. Heidi was simply awesome at what she did. There were days before she left that I had a hard time emotionally. I'm not going to lie. When you lose someone like Heidi, someone that you can count on day in and day out in such a critical role, you worry as a principal. The good news is this ceremony is a year out from Heidi's actual retirement, and West Street is doing well, and so is Heidi in her third year of retirement. So, all is good. Congratulations.
And I can tell you, Mr. Stack and I had to talk there off the ledge when we first spoke about about the news.
I'm here to speak about Linda DeRose. Linda has dedicated twenty-three years to Niagara Weefield. I have had the pleasure of knowing her for the past seven years. Linda actually retired at the end of last summer. So our office has felt her absence this year, this last school year. While I'm thrilled that Linda has been able to enjoy a much deserved retirement, I know that I speak for everyone when I say how empty our office feels with you gone. Linda, thank you for your years of dedication to the students and to our office. You are one of the best, and I am so grateful to have worked closely with you. Best wishes.
I really hate my laugh because with all out of the others, we still come back, we recharge, and we talk.
Anybody else want to hear a whistle at that? There's actually going to be something in my office, nothing makes me laugh, I'm worried. Right, is that on video?
Yep.
I'm going to do my best tonight to fill in for the entire Colonial Village Elementary School and recognize Shelley Smith this evening. That's good. I told you. All right. Let's take a minute to honor the one and only Shelley Smith. Truly a Swiss Army knife. She was the Swiss Army knife for Colonial Village and possibly all of Niagara Weefield. Shelley, be patient, Shelley. Swiss Army knife means you can do a lot of things. It means you can do a lot of things, really good. Shelley has been the guardian of the laminator and the mastermind behind the hallways, transforming into the Buffalo Bills fan zone every single January. Shelley has played a vital role in every school that she's been a part of here in our district and always willing to lend a hand, showering love on all the kids and all of the individuals that she's worked with. She's had an incredible knack for locating that essential item that you didn't even know that you needed at nine-thirty a.m., often from one of her many secret stashes, or thanks to her uncanny "I know a guy" ability. They say that you know a lot of, that you have a lot of guys. They, I know, I know a guy. Always helpful and perpetually smiling, unless someone dared to suggest taking down Josh Allen, the cutout before the end of the season. We all knew better than to cross that line. Shelley's been a true friend to all students and staff alike, and with her generous heart, sharp sense of humor, and her can-do spirit, she's brightened every day here in Niagara Weefield. Shelley, Colonial Village will miss your laughter, your unwavering dedication, and your Bills-themed decorating talents. Most of all, the building and the district will miss you. Congratulations on your retirement. You've earned every minute of it. Just don't be surprised if we reach out to you. You know, a lot of you, really, they come back. We'll call you after January, after the Bills win the Super Bowl. Wait, that, congratulations, Shelley.
Next, Dr. Allison Diggs.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about Maureen Mack. Maureen Mack, again, working at Niagara Weefield in two thousand and Maureen Mack, again, working at Niagara Weefield in two thousand and three. Sunshine Mack, as she's known in the business office. Started at the front desk in admin and then moved to business office to work on the district's health insurance plans. And in two thousand seventeen, she became district clerk. Maureen was always the happy camper at work, always smiling, never complaining and had a great work ethic. She was so knowledgeable about her health insurance plans that she was actually teaching Highmark a thing or two and the administrator at Highmark was gonna steal her from me. And I was like, no, no, no. Maureen retired last September and has since been trying to figure out how she had time to work full-time. She's been keeping busy traveling back and forth between Texas and Ohio to see her grandbabies. Um, Cole Mason and her newest first little granddaughter, Bella. And I heard recently that you don't have to travel to Ohio anymore, you're only gonna have to travel to Texas because her daughter and her family moved back home. So congratulations, Maureen, on all your successes.
Tonight I have the pleasure of honoring four very special individuals. Two who have served on this Board of Education and two who have served as administrators in the district. First, I would like to honor the great work of our student liaison to the Board of Education, Jonah Goldman. Along with being heavily involved in NW Athletics, Jonah decided to dedicate some of his valuable time to being the student voice at the Board of Education meetings. There are certainly many adults who give pause to the idea of speaking at Board of Education meetings. But to do so twice a month for a year, now that's commendable. It was exciting to watch how Jonah learned to navigate the critical position he held at the board table. Jonah provided excellent updates to the board and provided a student perspective on important issues. Good leadership is often about actively doing. And Jonah was an active participant in our C-DUP events and was a student leader at our biannual Eco-Campus Revitalization Projects. Jonah will certainly be missed. We wish him all the best in his college endeavors. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, I say thank you. You did an outstanding job and I'd like you to come up here for one. Here's a certificate for Jonah Goldman that you need to take. And this right here will be going, um, in the back, on the back wall. You may notice, Jonah, that you have the last spot. So, um, pretty special place. We will have other people. But you got, but you got the last, you got the last. Congratulations. Up next, it's my absolute pleasure to boast about an individual who served this Board of Education with care, passion and integrity. For the past nine years, Mrs. Julie Fago has served on the Board of Education. She has attended numerous conferences and legislative breakfasts and served on multiple Board of Education committees. Mrs. Fago actually served on the Capital Project Committee prior to serving on the Board of Education. Her dedication to this committee has resulted in over one hundred million dollars of capital improvements over the past nine years. Most recently, Julie has acted as the Chair of the Board's Policy Committee. Taking on these additional leadership roles has meant more time dedicated to volunteering for our district. Remember, everything board members do is volunteer. We have been very fortunate in Niagara Weefield to have board members who have always put the interests of students first. And Julie Fago is a model of that compassion and caring for kids. Besides giving her time, look at Julie here. Besides giving her time on the board, Julie also devotes time to assisting with our Family Support Center, a cause for which she has incredible passion and is shown great commitment. Mrs. Fago assists in sorting donations, providing additional time slots for families to pick up resources and in true Julie fashion, has collected donations from friends and has made countless personal contributions to the Family Support Center. Kara Kirk, our Family Support Center Coordinator, shared with me that Julie builds wonderful, trusting relationships with families at the Helping Hand Site and some of those families even ask for her by name of the days she's not there. Prior to serving on the Board of Education, Julie gave an incredible amount of time to the parent-teacher organizations. It was that volunteerism that inspired her to assist the district and run for the Board of Education. Julie does not crave the spotlight or attention that can come with being a board member. However, she always provides her thoughtful perspectives on every issue impacting our students and our school community. I have been most impressed with the consistent and professional way in which she handles the trials and tribulations of being a board member. I have the privilege of working very closely with seven people who collectively act as my boss. Emails, texts and personal phone calls seven days a week at all times of the day and night. Julie always tipped it a time to consult with me on matters important to the district. However, I have to share that on numerous occasions, I would reach out by text. And sometimes the texts were sent to just one individual based on a topic. On occasion, when Julie would receive a text from me that read, hi Julie, please give me a call when you have a minute, no rush. She would respond with, in caps, "Am I in trouble?" To which I would always remind Julie that she was my boss. Well, Mrs. Julie Fago, you have been an incredible board member and steward for this school community and it is my sincere privilege to present you with an apple this evening as a token of our appreciation for all of your hard work and everything you've done for this district. Next is my pleasure to honor Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Management, Dr. Allison Davis. Allison has served the district for twelve years. Dr. Davis came to the district at a time when Niagara Weefield was at the top of the Comptroller's fiscal, fiscal stress list, which is a fiscal stress rate, with a fiscal stress rating, excuse me, of eighty-eight point three percent. Allison is leading the district with a comptroller fiscal stress rating of zero percent for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Zero is a really good number when it comes to the stress rating, really for nothing else. As the school business official in Niagara Weefield, Dr. Davis is responsible for both the general budget and the Tuscula Nation School budget. In her work with the Tuscula Nation School, Dr. Davis has been instrumental in helping secure funding from New York State for much-needed capital project work at the Tuscula Nation School. Dr. Davis has also been responsible for managing funds provided through a contract with a New York power authority. It is fair to say that her position has required additional work in this district, above and beyond that of a normal school business official position. Dr. Davis has handled all of that work with great proficiency and efficiency. Dr. Davis has managed the district budget in a way that provided for the following. And this all happened in her years here. The restoration of the academic programs, the restoration of modified sports and clubs at both the elementary and secondary levels, the addition of a state-of-the-art turf athletic complex and now new tennis courts, upgrades to our science and technology rooms, creation of a technology reserve that has provided one-to-one technology capability, the construction of a brand-new auditorium, expected to be complete in February of twenty-twenty-six. Dr. Davis has also rolled up her sleeves to assist with the biannual Eco-Campus Revitalization Project. The work involves beautifying the campus, planting trees, restoring the riparian zone near our Kewa Creek and building hugiculture beds which recently were put in. She also worked diligently on the now-approved application to utilize host community funds to build an educational node, boardwalk and bridge along Kewa Creek. I'm tired just thinking about it. This educational space will allow science classes improved access to the creek for environmental science work. Host community funds will also provide brand-new playgrounds at three of our elementary schools. Dr. Davis has been honest and transparent in presenting the annual budget. Also, and perhaps hard to believe, given her position, Allison actually has a sense of humor. She is certainly good for an appropriate workplace prank every now and then. Allison truly enjoys the important work she does and enjoys doing that with her colleagues. Dr. Davis operates on the principle of always doing what she believes is best for students in the district. She works until the job is done and done right. Allison has dedicated herself to the job every single day. Regardless of the challenges put in front of her, she always made work a top priority. She is a true professional who has gone above and beyond to make our district a better place. Tonight it is my pleasure to present her Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Allison Davis, and my colleague and friend with her retirement. The last individual I have the privilege of honoring tonight is Miss Liz Carrery. Liz started in this district thirty-eight years ago as a teacher at the Military Road School. I would never ask, but I think she was ten years old at the time. Eight, she said eight. She then moved to Tuscula Nation School where she served almost her entire career and the last twenty-seven years as principal. First and foremost, I think you would be really hard thrust to find a more caring, compassionate, understanding, empathetic, sympathetic, kind-hearted, thoughtful and considerate human being than Liz Carrery. Your mom would be so proud. And what I think is most impressive is that Liz doesn't even see how truly unique she is. But instead, she believes her kindness is and should be the norm. As educators, it's important to live by the Latin phrase, tabula rasa, meaning blank slate or clean slate. In other words, regardless of a student's poor behaviors or adult's negative interactions, you always allow them to start fresh the next day without holding a grudge. In my career, I have not come across a single person who exemplifies this quality more than Liz Carrery. Leadership books almost always include a chapter related to the importance of building relationships. I believe Liz could write an entire book on this topic. During my ten years working with her, I have marveled at the care she takes to build relationships. However, Liz doesn't stop with growing her own relationships, but instead works diligently to cultivate relationships of others. I am very proud of the relationships and collaboration our district has with the Tuscula Nation. I am also thrilled at the way our district has further embraced the culture of the Tuscula Nation. However, I must say that without the efforts of Liz Carrery, we would not be close to where we are today. With care and intent, Liz has regularly provided me and others with important information to help our understanding of the Tuscula Nation and culture. Miss Carrery is the definition of a team player. As a leader of a team, it is important to highlight the strengths of those on, those on your team and assist them in the areas they need growth. Liz manages to excel at both of these important traits. She consistently highlights the positives of her students, staff and school. I encourage you to go to the website and check out the Tuscula Times if you've never seen it. Liz always makes sure to invite colleagues to important Tuscula events and does so because she believes and is so excited to share the cultural activities and school traditions with others. Miss Carrery's incredible ability to connect with others has enabled her to assist, promote and enrich the lives of staff and students in their professional and their personal lives. Finally, and most importantly, Liz is always, always about putting all kids first. For those that don't know, Liz is a yoga instructor. Little plug for her place in the listening. For the past seven to eight years, Liz has been teaching yoga in the mornings to her students. And anyone else who wants to attend, few years back, Mr. Sirianni and I went there and stretched, we're still recovering. Yoga is just one of the many ways Miss Carrery connects with her students. It has been an opportunity for students to stretch their minds and bodies and build a positive rapport with their principal. Everything Miss Carrery does for her students, and I mean everything, is because she loves them and cares about them. So please join me in congratulating Miss Carrery. So please join me one more time in congratulating and wishing all of our retirees a wonderful and long, well-earned retirement. We not only honor our retirees tonight, we also recognize those people who are tired earning tenure. Tonight, um, we have an opportunity to recognize those who are receiving tenure in our district. Please know that we are proud to say that getting a certificated position in Niagara Weefield is not an easy task. We have many highly qualified individuals who apply, so those who get hired are truly top-notch. It is then these individuals' job, job to prove themselves and to prove us right for choosing them. The staff members tonight, who will come in front of the Board of Education, have done just that. And we expect even greater things from them for the remainder of their careers. I'm gonna call the names of our retirees. If you're in the audience, I'm gonna ask you to please stand, hold your applause and we'll give them all a nice round of applause. We have Gina Knox. Lauren, okay, go ahead. Laura Chernoff. Rachel Ventura. Sierra Senor. Kelly Stoma. Monique Jackson Smith. Ashley Smith. Anne Kirk. Michelle Wing. Steve Bunter.
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, on behalf of the board, congratulations once again to our retirees and our new, uh, tenured position individuals. We are grateful for you. Uh, your, your work is, uh, you know, a great gift that you give to our community and on behalf of the district. And on behalf of the district, we appreciate you and wish you the best in your retirements and in your careers to come. So with that, we'll take a few-minute recess so you can grab a little more punch and maybe a little bit, and then we'll resume in about five to ten minutes. Thanks.
To speak?
Good evening, board members. My name is Amaya Henderson, and I'm a senior this year. I've been very honored to serve on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion in Education Board here at Weetfield for three years now. I have also been a part of the Gay-Straight Alliance for four years, serving as president for the last three. These activities to me exemplify the very best of Niagara-Weetfield. This community is one built upon inclusivity, empathy, and diversity. Working with these groups, we've worked tirelessly to make NW a better, safer place for everyone. We focus on building community using restorative circles, which I believe can have an incredible impact. But unfortunately, these tools can only do so much. Last Friday after school, the Gay-Straight Alliance placed decorations around the senior high in celebration of Pride Month, including three pride flags. By Monday afternoon, two of the three flags were taken down, and by Tuesday morning, all three had been taken. One was stolen by a student to be used as a quote-unquote "firestarter", while the other was found near a garbage can. One is still unaccounted for. While deeply disturbing and upsetting to me and many others, this is not particularly surprising. Actions similar to these have occurred every year of my four at the high school and are now something expected by members of the LGBTQ+ community. When decorating the school last week, instead of being to fully enjoy celebrating our community, one of my friends from the GSA asked, "What are we going to do when the flags get torn down?" I tried to be hopeful, telling them that that shouldn't happen, that people would understand the consequences. Clearly, that's not the case. Our community should not have to worry about hateful actions such as these. The GSA wants to make NW a safe space for all students, but we cannot do this when we do not feel safe ourselves. The NWHS Student Handbook states that "Learning happens when people's heritage, culture, and beliefs are respected." According to that statement, learning simply cannot happen without a stricter enforcement of a hate-speech-and-hateful-acts policy. Based on my understanding of the handbook, actions such as the vandalism of pride flags could fall under discrimination based on gender or sexual orientation, which is covered under the New York State Dignity for All Students Act, also known as DASA. NW follows a progressive discipline plan, which grants students different punishments based on their disciplinary record. Though this is all stated in the student handbook, LGBTQ+ students, as well as other marginalized students, fear hateful acts constantly and have come to expect perpetrators to receive no real punishment. I firmly believe that when it comes to purely hateful acts, such as the ones I've previously mentioned, the most serious punishments need to be implemented first. NW must strictly enforce the Zero Tolerance Policy for Hate to ensure the safety of all students. DASA also states a focus on prevention of harassment and discriminatory behaviors through the promotion of educational measures meant to positively impact culture and climate. I strongly believe that this education can and should begin at the elementary level. Through working with the Equity Board, I have learned that it's more than possible to achieve this goal, but it requires a lot of support from the district. LGBTQ+ history should be taught just the same as the history of any other marginalized groups. Giving elementary students a base-level understanding of our community will promote further empathy and understanding, opening the door to more conversations in the future with less hostility. This education should begin as soon as possible for the safety and security of all NW students. I loved my time at Niagara-Weetfield. Our community is truly a simple place. I want everyone to have the opportunity to enjoy their time as much as I did, while leaving the school better than it was. One of the core pillars of being a Falcon is respect. All students must feel this respect from their peers, or it's impossible for them to give it back. My friends, your children, your students, should not have to go to school afraid of the hate they might have to witness or even be victim to. For the safety of all Falcons, I encourage you to think about the words I've said tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Hey, moving on to our consensus agenda items. Call for motion to accept items one through nine of consensus agenda items.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. The motion is seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Onto our personnel items. Was there anything to separate? A call for motion then to accept personnel items one through thirty-one. Motion. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, stand, motion carries. Moving on to our standing committees. Devil Projects Committee.
Yes, we had a meeting today at the auditorium. We actually got a tour of it. It is starting to really take shape. We're actually around the stage looking out, and we can see like the upper deck and down below, it's starting to really look really nice. It'll be great when we get it open, because it's really going to be a really nice auditorium. Another, we are doing some other projects. What is the tech wing of the high school? They're going to be working on that. And then there's some other construction projects, like the main office at the high school and a couple others that are going to be worked on over the summer. That's about it.
Very good. Thank you. For Policy Committee, we have the
And then the, so the reorg starts at five and the regular meeting will start right afterward, okay? There's a document on the website for those that don't know, under the high school with all of the different senior events on them. Please click on the website and you can see this document has all the dates, the times of everything happening. For seniors, I know it was sent out to families as well, but for anybody else looking, the parade's in there, you know, just everything important for seniors, everything is included in this package, it's on our website. And if you haven't looked at the new website, please take a look because it really is fantastic. Our curriculum and tech, curriculum instruction technology director and assistant director of technology, put a lot of work into that and it's really awesome. It's, it's what we've wanted that website to look like for a really long time and so please take a look. The June eighteenth meeting, Board of Education meeting is going to be held in the library, okay? We're gonna move that to the library, there'll be exams taking place here, so we've, last year we held it in the same place, we're gonna hold it there again this year, so that's the June eighteenth meeting. And although I don't normally do this, I'm going to because I get to work with Amaya, Amaya usually don't comment on the comments, but you've been fantastic in our equity and education steering committee. We really miss you, we appreciate it, all the work that you've done. You know, one of the things that I would say is this, I've been in a number of school districts and none are perfect, right? And we have a lot of work to do, I think we always have a lot of work to do and whether that's people disparaging people because they're members of the LGBTQ community, whether that's because of the color of their skin or because of their gender, none of that's ever okay. One of the things that's always difficult, I think, for students is you just, you just never know what the discipline is for things either, right? I mean, you never know, you often don't know what people's past discipline history is, so I think it's hard for people to, to know what's right, you know, as far as discipline regarding those. One of the great things about schools these days is stuff like that, that's done, whether they're ripping down a pride flag, tearing other things off a board, breaking a window, almost all of those things are captured on our cameras. And we're able to then follow through a discipline and, and we do. And to the final point, you know, teaching tolerance is a really important thing that we do at all levels in all of our schools. And we do it differently based on the age of our students, but we can continue to work on that and I will say that the, our subcommittee group has done a lot of work in that area as well. And I thank them for all of that work, really important. And Jonah again tonight, you did an incredible job sending, representing, we, we're certainly gonna miss you and we appreciate all the work that you've done for us in that seat, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. No items, it's reports to the board, items for board discussion, old business, new business? Public comments, open for a public comments? Very well, open it to board member comments.
Yeah, I just want, Jonah, you've done an excellent job, you're the next generation of leaders, you've done a job representing the students and we thank you for that. I want to thank and congratulate everyone who was tenure and all the retirees and they've done a great job for our district and I hope they have a safe retirement, but thank you all of you.
Thank everyone, I echo the sentiment of Rick, we appreciate everyone and I thank everyone for coming out tonight, retirees and those who are up for tenure and thank you for everyone who sticks out these meetings with us. With that, I'll call for a motion to a new executive session. I'm making a motion.